All right, we will first have our invocation given by George Shahidi, the Veterans in Politics Minister, followed by our National Anthem by Elizabeth Mercado, the Miss Greater Las Vegas. So, George, it's all yours.
Let's all stand. Dear Lord, we do thank you so much for this day. We thank you for this event here. We pray you bless every candidate that's here. We thank you for them coming. We pray you bless their candidacy. Thank you for their excitement and their interest in running and being a public servant. We pray you put the right people in place to serve us correctly, our city, state, and country. We pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I can have everybody rise, please.
I want to thank Veterans in Politics for allowing me to do this. This is the first time I've actually been a moderator, if you will. So if I fail to live up to your expectations, please criticize me accordingly, so there's no stone unturned. I will introduce, of course, first our panel. And thank you, Elizabeth, for the wonderful rendition of the National Anthem. Our guest panel, we have a guest panelist, Kathleen Vermillion, a former city councilwoman from the city of Henderson. Give her a big round of applause. And as I call your names, raise your hand so folks know who you are. William Brown, an attorney. William's right here on the end. Say hey! And you can get up and dance if you like. Rob Lauer, U.S. Army, retired. Mike McKee. Jim Jonas, activist and radio host. Aren't you a Marine Corps retired?
No.
Okay. So I take on you there a little bit. Karen Stealman, auxiliary director and radio host down there on the end. And of course, Elizabeth Mercado, Miss Greater Las Vegas. Cheryl Gardner, United States Marine Corps. Retired. Still active duty?
No.
Okay, just checking. Rhonda Baldwin Kennedy, Veterans in Politics, Southern California Chapter President. Oh, major hand. Stanley Washington, one of our esteemed veterans and community activists. Steve Norden, U.S. Army activist.
Veteran.
Veteran. There you go, veteran. Dr. Richard Hawkins is also an attorney, I think, and economist. Yes, okay. Our sergeant-at-arms out front, if you get unruly, will come in here and get in here. That is Mike Yepko. So he's helping us out. George Shahidi, of course, gave us our invocation. He's also working the camera. Dor, we've got, of course, Steve Sanson, veteran as well. We're going to try to keep the answers just to a few minutes, if you will, so we can move right along. Let me introduce some candidates that are not here for Ward Two City Council. Bruce Gale, Anthony Roggerio. Bob Chin couldn't make it. Sharice Holmes is not with us. But with us today is Bob Beers. Bob, say hello to everybody. Roberta Boyers, say hello. Christine Kuzemka is here, say hello. Pat Raja, Raja's here as well. And Rick Truesdale is on his way. So that's who we were trying to be patient for and wait for Rick to show up. If you have any questions or comments or want to get involved with Veterans in Politics, please do so. I believe these interviews will be telecast via the Internet. Steve, what's the?
VeteransInPolitics.com.
VeteransInPolitics.com, if you want to watch it. Watch yourselves over again. It's always handy for me to see how bad I do. I'm not saying handy to do bad. So right now, I guess we'll get right into it. We'll start with our first panelist. Question from the panel, who wants to go first?
I'll start.
Okay, do.
I want to start off with Mr. Beers, if I could. Why do you think you lost to Gibbons in 2006?
I was outspent by a fair chunk, which is significant in campaigning. I had a lot of fun, and I'd probably do it again, even if I was going to lose. It's a pretty cool state.
I happen to think so. Before we're finished, is there, as city councilman, is there anything you think you could do to make sure that spending isn't such a huge factor in any race?
No, it's governed by state law. NRS 294A is the statute that governs the campaign activity in our state and sets the limits for individual contributions. And it's a less strict law than federal law that governs federal elections. But that is an issue that is to the purview of the legislature. City council is a seat in the executive branch rather than the legislative branch. And so our job will be whichever one of us is fortunate to be selected to help the city guide its priorities for spending and to hopefully improve the quality of life. And I'm sure we all agree on that goal. Probably have some differences in methods, which we'll explore today.
You just said that you were outspent. Should the seat go to the person that can spend the most?
No, it should go to the person who's most qualified for the job. But I guess the only answer I can give you is it's politics.
We can do better. Thank you.
Before we go on, I failed to do one thing. Bob, lay down the microphone in your hand. Why don't each of you introduce yourselves, also give a brief bio about who you are and why you're running for city council?
Okay, well, my name is Bob Beers. I'm a certified public accountant, certified fraud examiner. I've got a small CPA firm that's three years old. Prior to that, I served for 10 years in the Nevada Legislature representing this neighborhood. I am a graduate of UNLV and Clark High School and Cashman Middle School. I am blessed with a much smarter and more attractive family than I am. I'm like the black sheep of the family. My wife, Sarah, is here, and my daughter, Lindsay, and my dad, Frank, and my mom, Pat, and my father-in-law, Ken, and my mother-in-law, Grace. Did I miss anyone? And let me add that I would like to earn your vote.
Roberta?
I'm going to stand up because I'm so little that I almost can't see all of you. I'm a 35-year resident of Las Vegas, Nevada. My family roots go back 70 years. I was surrounded by civic-minded family on the right and on the left. My father was a mayor, a city councilman. He ran for Secretary of State in California and eventually became a senior senator there for over 10 years. He represented 55 years and older. He's a veteran. He went to college, to Georgetown. He was a Jesuit. Georgetown University in Washington, D.C., on the GI Bill. He actually went into the military at an early age, taking his brother's papers. He was only 16. And we hear all these stories frequently about the Aleutian Islands where he was stationed. Back to me. On the other side of the family, oh, gosh, in the '70s, early '70s, when Red Rock became an issue for the very first time for development there, oh, we're just supposed to introduce ourselves. I'll save that for...
You can do it.
I'm doing fine? Okay. My father-in-law became up in arms, was one of the first to speak up to save that national area from development, and got me interested in seeing where development goes and how it needs to be curtailed at times. My mother-in-law was responsible for initiating a computer system for the community of corrections with the criminal faction downtown and got the first computerized logging for criminals so that the lawyers and the judges would not have to go on hearsay when people came before the courts. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Fayaz?
I'm going to stand up also too, so... Good morning, everybody. My name is Fayaz Raja. My friend calls me Raja. So if anybody likes to call me, you can call me Raja, if that's okay. I came to Las Vegas 1979, and I bought a home in the Ward Two in 1980. My wife and I, we've been married for over 32 years. It was a very small town that time when we came in. I went to Wautec High School. It's all the way the other side, Sunset and Mount of Vista. Those days, 15 minutes, I could make it there. I graduated from UNLV in two different disciplines. One is hotel administration, bachelor degree, and the second in political science. I worked with the Culinary Union while I was going to school, almost 13 years. And I was working full-time, going full-time school. Open MGM in 1993 in the Food and Beverage Department. Open 96 Monte Carlo. And while I was working, I was involved with UNLV as a board member with almost nine years at the Hotel College alumni that we put together. I was a founding board member. I've been involved with the local community as a volunteer. I've been involved with the Used Ford Police Department. I was a board member since 2009. Also, I've been appointed to the Stization Academy with the also police department. And I've been here last 32 years. I've been very fortunate that the community has been really very good to me. I've been very blessed then. So I wanted to give back to the community, and that's what I'm here for. And I want to earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Steve?
Good morning, still. Thank you, Steve, for being here and moderating. Thank you, Veterans in Politics, for hosting this panel discussion today so that members of Ward Two can have a better idea of who we are. This has been an abbreviated campaign, about 28 days from the time of filing until voting, March 20th. My family moved here in 1970 from Detroit, Michigan. My father was a member of the UAW. He was a Marine. Unfortunately, he just passed in January. Got my mom here this morning and my partner, Nancy, of 15 years. I grew up on the east side, Sunrise Mountain, and attended Eldorado High School. I left Vegas. I went to the University of Washington and got my undergraduate degree. After that, I was a successful business manager with a company up in Seattle, Washington. And then I decided to go to law school. I went to law school at Seattle University. I graduated in 2002 and came back to be closer to my family here in Las Vegas, which is where I've been ever since. Subsequently to that, I clerked in the district attorney's office. And then when David Wall was elected to the district court, I was his first law clerk for a year and a half. I then went to the Clark County Public Defender's Office and then took a little deer off and went into civil law with Marquinhon Arbach. And I really missed practicing law. In civil practice, it was a lot more business-focused, and I missed representing people. That kind of ties into my 25 years of community service, both in the recovery community here locally in Las Vegas. I was on the board of We Care Recovery Services. I was also involved with community legal services up in Seattle, Washington, before I went to law school. And I was on the board of the Human Rights Campaign here locally. I'm running, I believe I'm the best qualified candidate because I have both private sector business experience as well as public sector as a lawyer. And I would appreciate your vote. So remember, the 15th and 16th is early voting, and March 20th is the actual election. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you. My name's Rick Truesdale. Sorry, I was running a few minutes late, meeting with a lot of neighbors. There's one question in my mind. I feel I'm the most qualified person for this job. I'm a lifelong resident of Las Vegas. I own a small business. I've built many small businesses. I've recruited many businesses to our community. When we talk about public service, I've been on the board of the Meadows School for 28 years. My wife and I wanted better education, more comprehensive education for our daughters. And we not only thought we'd talk about it, but we went out and started a school. That school today employs over 150 teachers at above-average salaries and educates a phenomenal group of students. And that's helped our education. I'm committed to education in this valley. But the realities are, we need jobs in this valley. And as a planning commissioner, I've been very pro-business in trying to bring a business perspective to the Las Vegas Planning Commission, working with staff at City Hall, working inside and outside of City Hall, to create businesses here. I've recruited corporations to this valley, bringing over 10,000 jobs to this valley with major restaurants, major retailers. So I'm not here to tell you, I think I can do it, I'd love to do it, I may want to do it. I've done it. You can check my record. I brought jobs here. I will continue to bring jobs here. That's the way we're going to solve our economic concerns and move forward. When we talk about Summerlin, I built the first building in Summerlin, the first building built out here. I was involved in the development of the lakes, not as a builder, because I'm not a developer. That's not what I do. I bring people together so they can enjoy their dreams and help them through the public system. And in doing so, bringing companies like Citibank here, created a great job base for this ward. Bringing the first building in Summerlin brought a large amount of jobs and brought the basis for parks in this ward. I want to make sure that we keep this ward strong, keep Las Vegas strong, and do what we have to do to make sure Las Vegas is viewed around the world as the most wonderful city out there. I fought, aggressively fought, cutting into the hillsides up on West Cheyenne, where developers wanted to build ridiculous buildings that were never going to be marketable, but they wanted to just slice into the top of the mountain. I've aggressively fought for a trail system throughout the valley. I've done those things. It's not, I want to, somebody else has done them for me. I've done those. And I'm here to tell you, I will be the best candidate for city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Your turn. Sharon, one microphone. For Sharon, one microphone, so we've got an expert early. We've got to make a podium. All right, back to our panelists. Yes, go ahead.
This question, can you hear me? This question is from all of you, starting from the left. While our city suffers through this local depression, was it the right time? Was it the right call to spend $185 million to build a shiny new city hall? After all, the old city hall was good enough for a billion-dollar private corporation. Wouldn't that money have been better spent helping local people who are suffering, local businesses suffering? Wouldn't that have been a better use of that money?
Thank you. Well, Monday morning quarterbacking is always easy to look back in retrospect and ask. What we have now is a really nice city hall. The good news is, the old city hall is being taken over by Zappos. Having lived in Seattle, Washington, and got my education there and worked in the business sector when high-tech was booming, they also experienced a bust. But they're back. Zappos is a high-tech company. They brought in 1,200 jobs to downtown. That's going to affect businesses like the Beet Coffee House, different restaurants down there. People are going to be renting apartments. People are going to be buying homes. I say we reach out to more international businesses, bring them here. What do we have that's different here from like Northern California, Oregon, or Washington? We have better property values. Our cost of living is a lot better. And now, with the revitalization and redevelopment of downtown with the Smith Center, education is a huge piece of drawing businesses here. We have a good tax structure, but that hasn't done enough to bring people here. If we're going to bring international, top-notch businesses, they're going to have families with young kids. The Smith Center with the Lead Children's Museum. I think arts and education go hand in hand. Those are some of the things that are important, as I'm walking through the ward in the past two weeks and hearing from individuals, jobs, the biggest thing. And so if we bring someone in like Zappos, you may say, well, that's downtown. How's that going to help us in Ward Two? Well, they can have call centers. If we draw their businesses, there's going to be other collateral positions in employment that may be available to residents here in Ward Two as well as the greater area of the city of Las Vegas. And so it may have been a really big expenditure. Perhaps we could have done other things, but I think as we think progressively and move forward in the next two to five years, I believe we're going to see a significant return on that investment.
Let me find two of the questions. Would you have voted for it? Would you have voted for it?
Now, yes. I mean, now I can tell you, I can see Zappos came in. I work downtown. I'm a lawyer in the Public Defender's Office. And I go to lunch at Latte, and I went to a really great bar down there. And there was a bunch of locals there, a place called Don't Tell Mama. And they've got a bartender who sings and plays the piano. And, you know, it was a lot of fun. It's fostering community. And I live in Ward Two, but I'm going down there. So I don't think we should get into an us versus them. I think we're all in this together, Ward Two and the other five wards.
Fayaz?
Christine pretty much stole my thunder. I was going to speak exactly the same thing. So I don't want to take too much time on that because it is, you know, water's over the bridge. I went there to file the paper on the new city hall. It's a beautiful building. I brought my nieces and nephew. They had no clue what I was doing because they were all little. And I explained them and said, Uncle, this is a beautiful building. They were very impressed. And then I drove through the old building, and I showed them, this is the old building. And they said, God, that's old, you know, for the kids. So what I have to say on that, I think what they did, that was many, many years ago. That was budgeted. There was a plan. Always buildings built. Having a Zappo come in, old building, I think that's a very good decision. That's going to bring a lot of revenue to the downtown. I own a property in downtown area, and it's been since '60s that property in close to downtown. My mother-in-law, she bought it in '60s. I think downtown will help, even though it's not going to affect our Ward Two. But it will bring the business, it will bring the employment, and that's, I take the position. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I'm going to try to keep you guys about two minutes, and we have so many panelists and so many candidates. Go ahead.
You need a red light.
You're doing good.
You need a red light that you can push the button at 1 minute and 50 seconds, but we don't have that. We are a diverse group in thought and inaction, not just the candidates, but the residents as well. One thing that we all have in common universally is perfect hindsight. There are votes that I cast as a senator that, with years of looking back, didn't turn out the way I had planned. I suspect this is one of those. I would have joined Stavros Anthony in voting against it at the time for several different reasons. The numbers are a little intimidating. The Zappos came in and bought the building for 16, or through an intermediary, bought the building for 16 million. They're going to put 40 more in. So you're going to have a total of $56 million, and essentially a functional new building, an old-new building. This thing is 180 plus or minus, $130,000 mortgage on it. And the payments start this July. Easy payments at first, they escalate up to about in year six, and they're after 7, or 3% rather, of the city's cash flow. And when you take a city whose revenue is flat and takes 3% of its cash flow away, you have very serious problems. The bigger issue, because it is here now, is what do we do going forward? That, I think, is where my background that I have is unique in this race. I've served 10 years on either the Finance or the Ways and Means Committee in Carson City. I understand many things about government finance, that it's going to take somebody who doesn't have that experience quite a long time to get up to speed on. And that will be critical as we decide how we're going to deal going forward with an extremely pinched budget.
Thank you, bud. Roberta? Just repeat the question. The question is, do you feel it's right to do to spend that amount of money in a new city hall?
I think the amount that was spent is astronomical. I wasn't on the board at the time to listen to all the sides and cast a vote, but my father alone was elected to his mayorship because he fought, he was for revitalizing and not rebuilding a city hall. I am for reusing something. I believe that we could have put a lot of our local construction workers in a project to give it a new look, put in desert landscape, make it nice. We have an abundance of vacant buildings and properties where I think Zappos could have looked at. Why get out of city hall? I worked there for eight years on the Board of Zoning as part-time, and it was adequate. I think I went into the new building. It is gorgeous. It looks like a showgirl. But right now in this economy, right now, it's, you go down Charleston, you go down any major boulevard, we have vacancies. Summerlin is a cocoon. We have less vacancies here. But first, we need to do our neighborhoods and our local people, our schools. And with our schools, bring up the education so we can attract the new business. I belong to the World Affairs Council. Two days ago, I had lunch with a man who makes light bulbs around the world, a billionaire. I said, what could Las Vegas do to bring your business here? Why aren't you building a factory here? And his answer was, we are leaving Connecticut because they're very unfriendly to us environmentally. I think we need to set up a group of people in Las Vegas to seek out international business, lure them with lower tax rates, great incentives. And I would have to, you know, go further into investigating that, but those kind of things. I want to reuse and revitalize.
Thank you, Truesdale.
Question was whether we were served by building a new city hall or would we have, would I have supported building a new city hall? Well, let's take a look at the existing city hall and one of the major issues down there. It is an existing building, 40 years old. For the city of Las Vegas, to make sure its employees are healthy, make sure the community has a healthy building environment, was going to be having to move its staff out of that building. They would have had to spend the $40 million to renovate that building just to keep the city there over the next five years. So it's easy to point and say, well, that wouldn't work, this wouldn't work, I didn't like it, or whatever. Let's dig into the facts and the realities of it. And furthermore, the issue of the way the city hall was done. It's private developer, yes, there are fees, rental fees to it. But for those kind of projects, we need private developers doing it. We don't need to focus on our municipalities playing developer and building buildings that don't benefit and don't control costs. The existing city hall would have cost us millions to move those people in there, out of there, disrupt services, disrupt our community. No one would know where they're going to get those services. And at the same time, we would be spending, probably not the $40 million Zappos is talking about, because of a public entity, we would have spent probably $70 million, fairly close. I know everybody wants to say that was a bad idea, but if Zappos had to build their own building, because they had that option, they would be locating the jobs that they're moving from Henderson to downtown Las Vegas. They would have been moving those jobs... They would have been moving those jobs to Louisville, Kentucky, San Francisco, some other city, where they had consolidated space, where a corporate campus could be created. So, this was a benefit for forward-thinking on behalf of the city council. Now, could we do things going forward a lot more reasonably? Absolutely. Should we look at things differently? We have a different economy today, that we can save dollars as we look at public facilities. But we can't just say we spent 185. We would have spent a phenomenal amount of money just making it safe for public employees and the community. So, I believe cities in down economies have to be part of the leadership in how we create building jobs. When every other hotel and strip, every other construction job in this town was being shut down, that building created 1,900 jobs. Those 1,900 jobs created an economic stability for a part of our community. And if we didn't, our bonds would be affected. The world would be a different place in Las Vegas today, because the city would have less of a rating on their bonds, and they would wind up paying more. We would all wind up getting paid more. So, let's, we can't play armchair quarterback and try to tear down something that is there and standing today.
Thank you. Thank you. Next panelist's question.
I think, I think that they should have just put all that reflective plastic back up on the front of the seat. My question is, for all of you, is, would you push to eliminate, or no, excuse me, I wanted to ask a different one here. Are you satisfied with the collective bargaining agreement in place with Las Vegas Fire and Rescue? If not, would you change, how would you change it?
Rick, you want to start that up? Just head down this direction. Two minutes, please.
All right. I think we have existing agreements with our Fire and Rescue. They have the ability to go to the state legislature to modify how their agreements are handled. I think the city has things that they can do to rework agreements, always look at where labor is. Are we keeping the right jobs? Are we paying fairly? That's the critical part of this. And our collective bargaining agreements are just, that are by state ordinance, give us a roadmap to work within. If there's a change to our, the way we treat labor, I believe it has to come from the state legislature, and it's something that they really haven't done for years. So, if we want to see change, our state legislature can make that kind of change. City council deals with the rules that they have within it. The city manager and their staff deals with the opportunities and the negotiations they can do.
Are you happy with it, and would you push to change it, if you're not happy with it?
I think as anything, if you look into it further, there may be some things that might be reasonably modified or recommendations. But again, do we want to spend a lot of money sending lobbyists up to Carson City to wine and dine legislatures? Or do we want to focus on what we can do as a city, and make a better city, and just send the message, "We want the money back here in our city to do what we need to do to build our city." Everything that everybody's tried for years to take to Carson City, a lot of that stuff should be done locally, for the benefit of the residents, benefits of Ward Two, Ward Five, Ward Three, Ward One. Everybody in this valley should be fighting to make sure the money that we earn, the fees we pay, are as low as they can be, and they stay here in our community. We don't need to fund a semi-annual vacation in Carson City.
Thank you, Roberta.
Oh, I agree with a lot of what Rick was saying, so I'm not going to reiterate it. I do think we need to keep the fees as low as possible. I think we all need to make adjustments in our salaries when we're asked to. I don't think certain people should, and certain people shouldn't, in different factions of the employment pools. And I just wanted to let you know that half of the $72,742 a year for part-time city council, I want to give back for scholarships regarding various areas of education and local charities. I think we all have to think of giving back, not getting more money, not draining our systems.
Well, I agree with Mr. Trusdale, that it's too hot to wear a coat in here. Our collective bargaining ordinance is a function of NRS 288. And I'll tell you folks what I told the firefighters' union prior to their endorsement of my candidacy. It's there because we can't have firemen strike. You don't want to be sitting at the edge of your property pointing the hose at your roof every night for the rest of your life. And the trade-off of by law, stripping firemen and women, of the God-given right that you all have, which is to withhold your labor from your employer. We put this in place to mediate contract disputes. I don't think Senator Dodge understood the unintended consequence of that law when he placed it into the state statutes in the 70s. But the upshot is, when local governments receive revenue more than they projected, the additional amount goes into dollars per hour, rather than more employees. The dollars came in for 25 years, more than we'd budgeted, because more people moved here than we anticipated. And those people need services, too. So now, we're Nevada out here, and 49 states out here. And out here, the symptoms are, conservatives harp on this one, we have the highest dollars per hour of any state in America for local government employees. Liberals say, "Wait a minute. We have the lowest number of employees per thousand residents of any city in, or any state in America." Both are correct. They're the symptom of the same problem. And what I challenge the union to do with me, in my terms, hopefully, on the city council, is to work to figure out how to craft that legislation, and ask Carson City to make those changes. So that when extra dollars come in, we hire more people, rather than
Hit your timer.
Raise the, raise, does that timer work for him, too?
Yeah, two minutes.
All right. Rather than raise the hourly rates. And they endorsed my candidacy.
Thanks, Bob. Thank you. Please.
Thank you. I take the position on this issue, is because it's the, you know, the state legislature's, you know, passing the bill. As a city councilman, you have to look at, I worked with the Culinary Union, and I was involved with the bargaining contract in early 80s, especially '84. I don't know if anyone was here that time. We had a really tough situation on the hotel. They didn't want to negotiate, and it was really a, 1984, big issue took place, that everybody walked out the job. The point I'm trying to make, that, you know, the bargaining, the contract that you have, as a businessman, you have to look at the both sides. If the revenue is declining, contract could be renegotiated. But again, because this legislature had made a bill, they passed the bill, they're the one, go back and fix it. So, I will take that position. I don't want to take too much time.
Thank you. Christine?
Thank you, Steve. I'm very happy to say I was endorsed by the Central Labor Council of the AFL-CIO, and I believe in collective bargaining, in the sense that it's essentially a First Amendment issue. If people want to get together and talk and present what is a fair wage, what are fair benefits, I don't think we should take that away. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Okay, next panelist's question.
Okay. My question is for all of you as well. Steve, make sure they stand on two minutes.
I'm doing two minutes.
Equally for everyone.
I'm doing, I'm doing it.
All right. Okay, so, this question speaks specifically to, on February 15th, the city council voted to allocate $8.6 million to reopen F Street. I don't know how many of you flushes, but living in Ward Five, Stanley and I, have watched this debacle go on for quite a few years now. My specific question to all three of you is, in a, in a
Five.
Sorry. All five of you is that, in a, in a five-to-one vote on the city council, this was approved, and the reasoning by most city council members was that it was a perception issue. Bob Coffin, city councilman of Ward Three, said that he wasn't willing to spend $8.6 million to change perception. My question specifically to you guys is, would you be willing to spend $8.6 million just to change voter perception? Or would it be better to spend that $8.6 million to develop a program that would hire more veterans?
I will start with you, Christine, on this end, and head down to Rick. And I'm glad I'm not sitting there today.
Yes, you are. Wow. Let me address the first part of that question, and 8.6 million being spent as to perception. I think if you go back and look at the closing of F Street, perhaps the opportunity was missed, and it shouldn't have been closed in the first place. All right? So, now, what do you do to fix it? Unfortunately, I think it did need to be fixed. And not for perception, but because it was the right thing to do, to fix it. Perhaps it was a mistake initially to close. I think it was a mistake to close it initially. Now, you put me in a hard place by saying, "Would I take that $8.6 million and create jobs for veterans?" Yeah, I would love to have, I'd love to have $20 million to create jobs for vets. As a lawyer in the public defender's office, I represent vets. And there's a Veterans Court that was established a couple of years ago, and there's more work to be done, I can tell you that. But one of the great programs that we do have in this city is US Vets, where some of my clients go to get assistance with homelessness, vocational retraining, and just help. So, it's an issue out there, for sure, but I don't, I don't think we could say that that $8.6 million. I think we can find other money for vets by increasing our revenues and working as a liaison with organizations like US Vets and the YellowRibbon.org organization. So, thanks.
Thank you. Perfect timing.
I, again, Christine taking that issue, I think I'm with her in that $8.6 million, that was a mistake. They shouldn't have closed the street. I mean, that, but again, going back to that, something that mistake was done, and I'm glad they corrected also, too, because that was the right thing to do. But as far as the taking that money and diversifying that dollar amount to hiring a veteran, I'm for it. Because if that part wasn't, made a wrong decision, and then had it corrected, then they should have, you know, that money, they could have used for a lot of different things. But again, that's a mistake, that was taken place. But as far as the veteran, there could be, money could be looked at in a different way. Because I am the businessman, and I believe the hiring more, creating more job, hiring more people, it brings the economy, you know, they have a more spending power, it helps the community, it helps the neighborhood. So, I, I think that was a good thing, that was the right thing, that did that to correct the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
Jim, I think I take exception to your question. You're characterizing the decision as one that was, shall we influence public opinion, or shall we hire a veteran? And I think the answer is unanimous amongst all of us, we would prefer to hire a veteran. Your question is flawed, in that you're characterizing the decision as influenced solely to influence public perception. I wasn't there for the meeting, and I don't know the materials that the council had to go through prior to making that decision. I suspect that the, that the money that was invested there couldn't have been used on a program to hire veterans, because it was probably earmarked for surfacing of streets and pothole repair and, and the maintenance of asphalt. I don't know that for sure, I'm just guessing. You know, obviously, the answer to your question is, yeah, all of us would prefer to not waste money influencing public perception and actually help real people. But I'm not sure that you asked a fair characterization of the situation at the time. My reading of the newspaper, which is always a dangerous place to get your information from, as I'm sure you will agree, sir.
I agree.
It didn't seem, it didn't seem to make a lot of sense, and, and I just don't know enough about it to really address it any further than that. I will say that I hope that the city council will, will stand up together and tell Carson City to stop giving us unfunded mandates. That is wrong.
Thanks, Bob.
Well, on the perception thing, the reason why I brought that up is because three of the city council members actually brought that up, why they were voting for the 816 million. So, that's where the perception
Remember their names. Roberta, if you want to answer that question.
I just want to add that, as far as I'm concerned, veterans and employment are a number-one priority nationally. I'm sure that pertains here, and that I do agree that the F Street should not have been closed initially. It should have been a mixture of things to help renovate and complete that project. And I look at bringing different groups together to find the solutions. I like to be a problem solver. Here's the problem, here's the solutions, let's connect the dots.
Thank you.
Thank you. I really think you've got to understand what goes into these decisions. Those monies come from federal government. They have a huge list of what you can and can't do. That roadway was designed under a long-term federal program, from what was reported in the papers, and hence, we have that. As a city resident, as a planning commissioner, as somebody who believes in our, in making access to all of our community, that's a poor design. At the end of the day, if there are dollars that are strictly set for roadwork, that could be used in the city budget to correct this problem, it's absolutely imperative we do that. But on the other hand of that, other side of that, we need to understand the decisions that are thrown upon us by state, federal government, and make our decisions locally. Not just, "Well, we're going to get this grant, let's go do what they want, and we'll spend, we'll find the rest of the money on a city budget." We need to sometimes say no to grants, no to money that's coming into our community, so we can control how our community is developed. Not let a greater good outside of Clark County tell us how to develop our city. The fact is, I think the council made a good decision to open that up. I wish we could have seen monies come from different areas. But that has nothing to do with any of our commitments to find jobs, encourage business to be here, and encourage first, the hiring of veterans. We have hundreds and hundreds of thousands of veterans returning home. And as this, as we've gone through this long, drawn-out war, we want those veterans to be treated better when they come home. And we want there to be jobs for them, and that doesn't mean, "Well, I'll have to raise money to get more jobs, because we'll put somebody else out of a job." We want to grow our economy, so we can create jobs.
Thank you, Rick. My production team has provided me with a 10-second However, you all did very well. You've done a great job, Stanley, with that two minutes. I appreciate that. Stanley, I think you're next.
Thank you, Steve. There are a lot of good questions that could be asked here in the house. I know there are, but I'm going to focus on the one that I think that broadly affects everybody. With Stanley Gibson in mind, are you guys comfortable with Metro's current force-of-use policy? One, two, if not, what improvements would you suggest to Sheriff Lesby to improve? And three, did you guys agree with the decision that your former Ward Two representative made recently relative to the Henderson police situation?
Okay, is this for everyone? Stan? Okay. Rick, we'll start with you on that.
I think our local police have a tough job. Our community has a tough job interacting with the police. It's so easy to highlight the horror stories that have gone on, and a video clip that actually made me cringe in every level, is very difficult to understand how that doesn't require some further action. But on the other part of that, I also believe that we spend hours and hours training our police. Not all of them are perfect. We have, in any business, or any organization, you're going to have members that aren't performing at the level they should. But we need a strong and supportive police force. We need that public safety element in our community. And I think our men and women in Metro, the ones that are doing their job very well, actually take a real big hit actually take a real big hit for the ones that do it very poorly.
Does that mean you're comfortable or not?
Comfortable with-
The current force of use policy and the impact of that?
I'd rather them not have to use any force. I would rather that when we- Let me, can I finish? All right. We need to make sure that our policies are constantly reviewed. Our current policy has served us well. I don't know if it's been represented well with regards to the excessive use of force that has happened in many instances. We've had more police shootings in the last year than in many, many years previous to that. I don't know the issues on each one of those. I don't read each one of those. I think current district attorney Steve Wilson stepped in in his first battle, or his first- he might have presented it better. I don't think we should have just walked away from that. Thank you.
Roberta?
I can only speak from my own personal experience. I think we're really in a bad situation right now in Las Vegas. You want a yes or no?
Are you comfortable?
I am not.
With the impact?
I am not. I am not. And I think it needs to be addressed nationally. We need to look at better examples. I think we need to upgrade the educational systems for these officers in how they handle people of any faction. My own mother, who's seventy-eight years old, five years ago, I was taking her to dinner. She was pulled over by a policeman and his rookie for an expired tag. She had already completed that, but it had not been put on. He was extremely rude. I was appalled by how he spoke and handled my mother, who had my twelve-year-old daughter in the car at the time. And I think if it's only gotten worse since then, you know where I stand.
Did you agree with our witness?
I think it's too soon. I don't have all the facts in front of me, so I can't answer that honestly for you right now. But in the future, I will be able to.
Thank you. Bob?
I would be supportive of a formal review of Metro's use of force policy. I cannot recite it to you. I'm not sure that I have read it in the last year, so I'm not sure what it says. But I would be very interested- Understand. Understand. I'd be very interested in a formal process to review that and have a community discussion on what it should be. I am not happy with the results. I am a member of the advisory board to the U.S. Civil Rights Commission here in Nevada, and we've just released our report. It was unanimous, and it calls for the U.S. Civil Rights Commission to take a look at the use of force in law enforcement in Clark County. As was reported in the newspaper, if what was reported in the newspaper is a complete recanting of the Henderson case, no, I did not agree with the district attorney's decision.
Thank you, Bob. Paez?
Thank you. If you may allow me, I just wanted to explain my position because I am involved with the use force, I'm a board member with the use force with the Metro Police Department since 2009. If you allow me, if you may, you know. Yeah. And then I'll let you know my position on that. Since 2009, actually going back to nineteen-ninety-two, I took the Stizzen Academy. What they do, they invite you, the public, to join, and they give you twelve weeks of training program, just like a police officer. I took that ninety-two. They invited me to join. In 2009, I came in as a board member. I look at a lot of cases. What happens at any time a police officer use the force, they have an internal investigation. You know, pages of hundreds and thousands and thousands of pages that you review, and then they confront you, you as a jury sitting, and they explain you. It was justifiable, non-justifiable. And you look at their eye, and you ask them questions. So just want to share with you, because I've been, since 2009, been involved with that, there's a fine young man and woman working in police department. Also, just recently, I've been appointed to also- I'm going to, yeah, I'm going to, so I've been appointed to the Stizzen Review Board also, which is on the civil side. This is on the other side, where the Henderson police issue took place. I rode with a police officer for twelve hours. And I just want you to know, as a Stizzen, I'm very proud of them, very proud of them. But each organization have, you know, people that you don't feel comfortable. And even though talking to the police officer, they're not comfortable. They're not comfortable. But what happened at the Henderson, I think that was wrong. That was bad. That person should be gone. That's what I would say. Thank you.
Let me answer your question directly. No, I'm not comfortable with it. It's not just a one-time occurrence. All right? And this past week, I was actually at Metro's new building presenting a class on competency court and mental health court. And the purpose was to educate the new class of recruits and officers at CCDC about what the difference is with mental illness, mental retardation, and brain injury. And unfortunately, in the most recent-